Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Spokane City Council Legislative Session for January 24. Councilmember Kinnear is trying to log in still, so let's start with the roll and hopefully she'll be joining us soon.
Okay. Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Kinnear is absent at this time.
Okay. Well, this is a great night. The mayor is going to introduce to us two.
Lord.
Okay.
Oh. We have Lord, Councilmember Kinnear is here now, note for the record. But this is a great night. The mayor is going to introduce us to two really important candidates for new positions in the administration at the city. So we're going to start off with that. And mayor, I'll hand it over to you. And welcome to City Council. Mayor, it's so great to see you. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, council. I am thrilled to present two incredibly talented candidates for your consideration and confirmation tonight. One is Chris Smith for Human Resources Director. The other is Spencer Gardner for Planning Director. And let me tell you a little bit about both of them. Chris has more than 20 years of human resources experience, including senior leadership positions with three federal agencies. She is also a West Point graduate and an Army veteran. So thank you, Chris, for your service to our country. She most recently served as a director for Human Capital for the Criminal Division within the U.S. Department of Justice, and also as a branch chief for the Employee and Labor Relations within the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Department of Justice. And she also held a human relations, resources positions with the U.S. Department of Defense. So the fact that we can get somebody with that level of experience to come serve our city after serving our great country is, we're very, very fortunate. Spencer Gardner for Planning Director. He comes from the private sector with wealth of experience, bringing together different perspectives and ideas, champion policy and solutions, and then also leading and growing staff. That set him apart. We did an extensive national search for this position. It was one of three recruitments that we have had to try to get a planning director. As you know, this position has been open for several years, and it has been a real challenge to find just the right person, and we have found that with Spencer. I'm going to let Steve McDonald, our Community Economic Development Director, tell you a little bit more about Spencer's background.
You're muted, Steve. Welcome to City Council.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, fantastic. All right. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council president and members of the council. Several of you know and have worked with Spencer in his various civic activities in Spokane, but many of you may not know that Spencer has worked for the last 11 years with two large engineering and planning firms, HMTV and Tool Design. He worked in Wisconsin, Chicago, and has worked in Spokane for the last few years. In this work, he's worked with dozens and dozens of clients and communities and throughout, you know, throughout the U.S., and it's given him a really unique experience and skill set that will greatly benefit the city of Spokane. So I very much look forward to working with Spencer on Spokane's challenges and the opportunities, and I'm very excited at the prospect of Spencer applying his skill set knowledge and love for Spokane, which he has and grows to our city. So with that, thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Thanks to both of you for showing up tonight at our session. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Fister first for Resolution 10.
Resolution 2022-10, Appointing Spencer Gardner as Planning Services Director.
All right. Do any council members have any questions or commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is obviously a long time coming. I've been able to participate on, I think, the three rounds of planning interviews that we've done. And as I think most folks know, I didn't quite think that we had identified candidates previously that quite met our expectations here in the city of Spokane, but I think Spencer changes that. I think he'll be a great addition. I'm really excited to have him on board. And I've had an opportunity to see him in action in some of these committees and stuff that I have a chance to serve on, and I think he'll be a great addition to the city of Spokane. So just really grateful that we took our time and got it right, and hopefully now we can see some good reforms and some good progress.
All right. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I have worked with Spencer Gardner. We did some volunteer work at Spokane Housing Ventures over the last couple of years. When I first met him, he was a little eccentric to me because he rode his bike into the meeting, but yay. But he was open-minded, thoughtful, creative ideas, just totally out of the box of his knowledge from all the places he has worked. So I am truly excited for his energy that he will bring to the city in this department. So welcome, Spencer.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I never know if you see me because I'm on the edge over here. So this is a great choice, mayor, and you're right, it's been a long time in coming. Had the opportunity to interview Spencer. I've worked closely with the planning department. I have for a number of years. So I felt their angst of not having a planning director for all those many years, but I think this was a good choice. I'm excited to work with him and see what we can do moving forward. So kudos. This will be great.
All right, and I want to join the parade as well. I first was exposed to Spencer through his writing at the website Strong Towns, which is just a really innovative urban planning website. And then I met with him many times on community projects around transportation, and he volunteered his time for the city on several great things. And I am super excited for him and for our planning department and for the city. So my only complaint, Spencer, is you should have applied the first round instead. We'd have to wait this long. But I'll let you make that up to us. With that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Zepone.
Aye.
All right. That's seven to zero, so thank you.
Do I get the vote?
There's one more.
Oh, no, Jonathan, you don't. It's your unlucky night. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I'm an aye. I'm an aye. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thanks to my staff here for catching that. But anyway, yes, congratulations, mayor, and Spencer, and the city. All right, let's go to Resolution 12.
Resolution 2022-12, Appointing Chris Smith as Human Resources Director.
All right. Any council commentary, questions? All right. Well, we don't know Chris as well because we just met her in this process, but she's very well qualified, and I'm super excited as well that we'll have that leadership in that department. So with that, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Aye.
All right. Again, seven to zero. Congratulations again, mayor, Chris, and the city. This is great news. All right. Thanks, everyone. Let's go back to the top of our agenda. We have a special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36167, Amending Ordinance Number C 36161, Passed by the City Council, December 13, 2021, and Entitled: In ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in. American Rescue Plan Fund I, Increase Appropriation by $1,450,000 funded from the city's direct allocation of the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $1,450,000, is provided to the city of Spokane Parks and Recreation Division to replace funding lost due to COVID-19 solely for the renovation of the Centennial Trail Don Cardon Pedestrian Bridge. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority for the Centennial Trail renovations to the Don Cardon Bridge.
All right. And we have discussed this a bit in committee and in our briefing session, but essentially this is the bridge on the east side of Riverfront Park that connects the University District, and it is in danger of being closed. And we've secured quite a bit of money from the legislature and private donors to repair it, but we need the balance of that, up to $1,450,000. It may not take as much, or we may be able to get other contributions to it. There's no public testimony requested on it. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I, my concern is that there's a lot of investment that's needed in Northeast Spokane, and I just, I worry that some of that may not happen as some of this money gets spent in other areas. And this is an important project. It's an important infrastructure project. It is in Northeast Spokane in my district. And I guess for me, I'm debating, you know, over what are the priorities? What is higher ranking than another? But ultimately, I don't want to vote against a project that is important in Northeast Spokane for the hopes that will get others. And so I'm just going to continue to beat the drum. We need support for funding the old Hilliard Library, standing up behavioral health efforts there. Northeast Public Development Authority needs a lot of assistance to get it going and get jobs growing and potentially establish an area where we can do more housing. These are areas I'm just going to keep beating the drum, but I am going to support this tonight and hope that we can advance some of those other priorities in our next round.
Any other council commentary? All right. I'll just add that it's been a pleasure working with Garrett Jones, the Director of Parks, on moving this forward. I, when I was first working in downtown Spokane, I used to go running at lunchtime with my boss, and we would go to the footings of what was then the completely broken down bridge there. And we would sneak through the fence and go swimming there in the mid 1980s, and we never imagined that there would be such an amazing connection. When I moved back to Spokane and saw that bridge and the University District and what that means and how critical it is, it's clear to me this is a super important priority for us. And I do support more ARPA investments in Northeast Spokane. I've been working on the vacant library plan, and note that we did just put in a new library there. And there's plenty of things all over the city, and I'm confident that we'll allocate money to where it's most needed in the future. So super happy to support this. And we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Aye.
All right. That passed a seven to zero. We deferred Ordinance 36064 until February 28. And that brings us to some additional resolutions.
Resolution 2022-9, Approving Settlement Agreement and General Release of All Claims of Tricia L. and Corey Christian, as agreed to by the parties, $195,000.
All right. There's no public testimony requested. This is the settlement of a vehicle collision between a city employee and the Christian family. This will resolve all of that. Any questions or comments? All right. We'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And that brings us to Resolution 11.
Resolution 2022-11, Expressing the Attention of the City Council to Designate a Multifamily Tax Exemption Residential Targeted Area and Setting Hearing for February 14.
So this would modestly expand, extend the area for multifamily tax exemption up north Monroe to the Garland District and east and west on Garland, and then also in the University District in the southeast corner, kind of where Brown Building Supply used to be, under the Howard, Hamilton Street Bridge in that area. We have one community member who'd like to testify, Antony Chang. So I think, Antony, we're going to have you on video. All right. I see you're square there, Antony. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Beggs. Thank you, council members, and this opportunity to testify on behalf of this important resolution. I speak on behalf of Millennium Northwest, and we are, have a vision to help catalyze walking neighborhoods such as Garland. And certainly, this council and its administration has recognized an incredible crisis in housing in this community. And the MFTD is one of the critical tools, policy tools that this council has to help incentivize development and infill development, which is critical and in alignment with the city's plan. So I just thank you all for extending these boundaries to both the University District and to the Garland District. And this will absolutely incentivize developers to produce more housing in these areas. So thank you, City Council.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for the workforce housing that you're helping to develop throughout our community. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just affirm what Antony said. This is a real critical tool and probably one of the best incentives we have for multifamily housing, and so definitely support expanding those targeted areas.
Okay. Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to publicly recognize Antony. He has spent a good deal of time and effort in the Garland District, meeting with the Business District and individuals in that area that have been interested in looking at opportunities to create more housing, but also revitalize their district. So I appreciate it. This is just the beginning. There are going to be a lot more community conversations around this. But he has been, every time I've had a question or concern, or we've had a business person in Garland that has had questions, he's been very receptive to putting everything aside and talking to them and spending time, and especially meeting them where they're at, which is really, really important. So I just want to thank him, and hopefully we'll move forward and we'll get more individuals up in the Garland area involved in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so people understand the process, this resolution would start the process of the expansion of the boundary, but there would be additional opportunities for public testimony on February 7th at first reading of the ordinance, and then on the 14th at the final reading of the ordinance for people who want to weigh in. I wanted to especially thank Terry Stripes in the Planning Department for moving fast on this, once we told her we were interested in these extensions, and Brian McClatchy from my office as well. So looking forward to that. So this, again, is just the resolution that starts the process. It'll finish up in February. With that, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero, and we have no first reading ordinances. We do have one hearing and first reading of a vacation. So if you would like to read that, Ms. Fister.
H1A, Hearing on Vacation of Perry Street Between Celesta and Hartson, as requested by the owners of the Liberty Park Apartments. H1B, First Reading Ordinance C 36166, Vacating Perry Street Between the North Line of Hartson Avenue and the South Line of Celesta Avenue. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right. And we have one community member who has signed up to testify. Oh, I'm sorry. Eldon, could you give us a brief presentation, and then after that, we'll invite Mr. Kite, I believe, to testify.
Good evening, council. I'll try to bring this one up here. Okay, the applicants have requested vacation of Perry Street between Hartson and Celesta. Primarily, the goal of the project is to consolidate property they own on both sides of Perry Street to build some affordable housing, multifamily units out there. We do not have any city utilities or any fiber communications or anything of that nature in that right of way, so we're not requesting retainment of any easements in there. So at this point in time, we would recommend approval of this vacation, subject to conditions. And a couple of the conditions that we did have, we didn't discuss earlier today, were just the realignment of this intersection slightly at Hartson and Perry in there, just to make that access a little better as you drive in, assuming this vacation, if it's approved. On there, we would want to see a little bit of a better alignment, I guess, of the actual access into the apartment complex. That would be one of the conditions we had. And primarily, that's where we're at. So we'd recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any further questions for Eldon? All right. I'm not seeing or hearing any. Is Mr. Kite going to appear by phone, do we think? If you're there, Mr. Kite, if you want to hit star three on your phone, that'll raise your hand electronically for us. All right. Last call, Mike Kite, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. All right. Okay. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
So I actually spoke to Mike this week, so if he's not able to get in, he wasn't necessarily in favor or against, was my, was my feeling. It was just, there had been some concerns with snow plowing having been an issue in the past, access for firemen being issues in the past. I think those were the things that he was just going to bring up tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Yeah. Any other council commentary? All right. With that, we'll have a vote. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
All right. Councilmembers Zepone.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And nobody signed up for open forum tonight, so people get their evening. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I wonder if I could just make it personal privilege.
Yes, please do.
I just, since we're not going to have an evening meeting next week, I just wanted to make sure and mention tonight that for those interested, the, on February 5th, from 1:00 to 7:00 at the U.S. Pavilion Riverfront Park is the Lunar New Year Celebration. And that's being put on by an organization called Spokane's United We Stand, which my wife is involved in, full disclosure there. And this is the first time in 89 years that we will have an actual official celebration for the Lunar New Year here in the city of Spokane. So really exciting. Hopefully, everybody can come down and participate. It'll be a fun time, and there will be fireworks at 7:00 PM, once it's concluded.
All right. Great.
Fun times.
Great. Thanks for bringing that to our attention and excited for that event. Councilmember Cathcart brings up a good point. We had nothing filed for our legislative agenda for next month. We had nothing filed for our legislative agenda for next Monday, and so we're simply going to do a little bit of extra business at our briefing session at 3:30 to make some board appointments. And other than that, we'll be back on February 7th for our normal legislative session. So everyone, please take care of yourself and the people you love, and if you can, take care of someone else. Have a good night. We are adjourned.